... report, uh, will be the workshop session on June twenty-six, nine AM. Commissioner's Court Room, County Administration of Energy. You'll understand today's segment is four forty-six. This meeting will be conducted by a video conference for the police, the form of the officials in the courtroom, just paid in person, in person at County Administration of Energy, which is six, four, and six, five, five, one, one, two, seven. First time is called all of the six, print patients, which is the rest, and brought in feasible, studied by Doug Dawson, resident CCG, the salt, and all better, directed brought in itself, and that didn't mean some people. Come on in.
Tim Arbieter, Director of Consulting Services with Finland Engineering. Glad to be in front of you today. As well, we have Doug Dawson from CCG Consulting, who's joining with us via Zoom meeting this morning. It's a pleasure to be here today and to show you some of the work that's been done. Thank you.
That might help the participants online hear me, so. So with that, it's been great to work with your county leadership over the past several months on this particular study, but we're here to give you, uh, give you a primer on what we found and what will be in the report that will be forthcoming. So Doug, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, I'm, I'm getting an echo here, but I'm Doug Dawson from CCG Consulting. I happen to work out of Asheville, North Carolina. It's a pleasure to meet you today, and as Tim said, your folks were extremely cooperative in this process. I think you're going to be both surprised and interested by a few of our findings today, so. I, we, we found things we did not expect, so. Do you want me to go ahead and just launch into it, Tim?
Yes, sir. Why don't you go ahead and share your screen?
All right, so we have a PowerPoint to show you here, and, uh, and let's do that. And can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Tim.
All right, so, so today, we want to talk about broadband study. As Tim said, there will be a ridiculously long report of about two-hundred-and-fifty pages headed your way if you'd care to read it, but today, we're giving you the short version of it. So we wanted to find out how many homes in the county don't have good broadband. And, and good broadband, in this particular case, was measured by homes who cannot buy broadband that's at least one-hundred megabits down and twenty megabits up. That happens to be the definition that's being used in all the broadband grants, and so by knowing those locations, we would be identifying the number of places that could get grant funding, uh, to help that, to help get that built. There's a huge amount of funding coming to the state. Uh, there's going to be an announcement today from the federal government. We're expecting Texas to get two to, somewhere between two and three billion dollars from the federal grants. On top of that, the Texas Legislature approved another one-and-a-half billion of broadband funding that has to go to voters, but between those two, that's a huge amount of money. This report that we wrote are, are to, to inform you today, it's, it's to inform the public, and it's also to inform the ISPs. I mean, where we, this report, it really helps folks who want to apply for grants, so. Um, again, we wanted to find a number of customers who don't have one-hundred-and-twenty megabits per second. Uh, I won't spend much time on this slide, but we, we, we've identified all the ISPs in the county, we've talked to them all. Uh, that's both the telephone companies, the cable companies. You also have some very interesting and good fiber overbuilders already in the coun, in that's, in the county, building, uh, fiber. Um, we also, you have a number of, of folks doing wireless internet, and then there's also satellite and cellular broadband. So there's lots of options, but there's still, it turns out, a lot of folks who don't have good broadband. Um, so again, we also reached out to the public, and we had a both online business and residence survey. We also interviewed a lot of key folks in the county to talk about the broadband situation. Uh, the survey showed some interesting results. It showed seven percent of the folks don't have any broadband in their home today. Most of them said they can't get it, it's just not available at their home. Uh, the rest said that they really couldn't afford it. Uh, twenty-eight percent of the folks, uh, just, this happens to not be what we studied, but twenty-eight percent of them couldn't wait to tell us that the cellphone coverage doesn't work at their house. So that turned out to be something we heard over and over again. Uh, the average price being paid for broadband is eighty-nine dollars. I think that might be the highest we've ever seen. Uh, we normally see around seventy-four, seventy-five dollars. Uh, there's some good reasons for that. Optimum is one of the most expensive cable companies, but the rural broadband was even more expensive. A lot of people are spending a whole lot of money with some of the rural options, uh, with satellite and stuff. Um, thirty-three percent of households have a student at home, and forty-three percent of them said that home broadband was not good enough for homework, and so there's a whole lot of concern about that. And that include, not only folks in Rory, as that included folks in the city who were having problems with homework. Seventy-four percent of residents support building fiber, uh, and so another twenty-four percent might, if they had more facts. Uh, and then forty-nine percent said they would buy fiber from, from a new broadband network, remembering that some percentage of the people in the county already have fiber today. So those folks didn't, obviously, would not do it because they already have it, so. Uh, the business surveys, the most common problem reported was, it was a lot of slow broadband during the middle of the day, uh, some occasional multi-day outages, and a lot of shorter outages, and outages are just deadly to businesses. Some of them told us that they simply, when they had an internet outage, they had to stop working. So I mean, that's certainly not a good situation. About half of the employee, of the businesses we talked to said they can't send some of their employees home to work because they don't have good broadband at home. Uh, we also heard from a real estate agent or two that it's really difficult to sell rural homes right now that don't have good broadband. And then, again, all the businesses complained about their cellular coverage, so that we heard that from them as well. Um, this is an interesting slide we got, and you can see the numbers on the right. This is one month out of each of the four quarters of the last year. These are speed test results, and so we, we've, we've categorized them, uh, by the cable company DSL Fiber, and the, a more detailed report of this will be in the report showing each of the individual providers. But what this shows you, you see the middle one, it was fiber, fiber speeds averaged three-seventy-five megabits down and three-forty-two up, so that, that's both fast download and fast upload. Uh, the cable company also was pretty fast download, way much, way slower on the upload, and that's due to the limitation of their technology. As we would expect, DSL was very slow, at twenty-six megabits download and only four megabits upload. Fixed wireless was surprisingly slow, and we'll get to that a bit in a minute in some of the slides, because a number of those wireless ISPs are reporting that they're delivering a hundred megabits, and we simply didn't find that in the speed test. And then satellite, uh, which in your case was mostly Starlink, is showing fifty-two down and six up. Again, that's a lot slower than what Starlink originally said they would be delivering, uh, but it's, but it's still way better than DSL. Uh, the brand-new category is, is fixed cellular, that's mostly T-Mobile, and that's actually pretty fast download. Uh, it's only reachable by people fairly close to cell towers, but it's pretty decent download speeds. Um, the main purpose, again, these speeds are averages, and let's not forget that, because that, there are people in all these categories who get much faster speeds, and there's people who get much slower speeds, so these are the average of everybody. You know, for the fiber, fiber and the cable company are both capable of gigabit, but a lot of people don't subscribe to gigabit, they subscribe to something slower. So that's why the averages are there, but it really highlights the difference between the technologies. Um, here's probably the key slide maybe in, in the whole report here in the study, and I'll show you some maps to back this up. Per the FCC, only nine households in the county are not served today, another one-thousand are underserved. Unserved means they can't even buy twenty-five-three. Underserved means they can't buy the hundred-and-twenty that I mentioned before, and then everybody else can buy at least a hundred-and-twenty. Our study shows that there's over six-thousand-three-hundred homes that can't even buy twenty-five-three, so, so our results are drastically different than what the FCC maps show. And, and let me just show you what those maps look like. So this is the FCC map directly out of their latest mapping program. The orange is areas where people can get a hundred-and-twenty megabits or faster. Uh, the yellow are places where they can buy something between twenty-five-three and a hundred-and-twenty, and somewhere on that map is a little dot of nine people who can only buy the twenty-five, uh, less than twenty-five-three. If you blow it up big enough, I think we would find it, but somewhere in there is a tiny little dot. This is what we think the map really looks like after we did all of our research, and Tim will talk about some of the research we did when it gets to his part of the slideshow. This is what we think it really looks like. The orange areas are where people can really buy a hundred-and-twenty, or in a few cases, we know a hundred, we know that fast broadband's coming because an ISP said that they're getting, they're in the process of building it. So we've done, some of those areas don't have it yet, but they're going to be getting it very soon. All the blue areas are the places in the county where people can't buy fast broadband. Very drastically different situation, and here's the two maps side by side, just so you can see how drastically different they are. Uh, we see this all over the country, but I don't know that we've seen one this extremely different. The reason for the difference between the two maps, there's a bunch of reasons, but the number-one reason was that there's a number of the wireless carriers who are claiming served speeds, who, as you saw back up in the speed test, are not delivering those speeds. And so, uh, and, and a lot, most of those wireless carriers use unlicensed spectrum, and according to various grants, which is the whole purpose of the study, those don't count as broadband when you go to file for grants. So we believe all those areas in blue are grant-eligible, that, that somebody, and any ISP could come in here and ask for money to try to build in those areas. And I think that's the whole point of this study, is to find a solution for all those blue areas. So that, that's the reason that we did the study in the first place, and so, and our, our maps are very detailed, so we know exactly who they are, how many houses, and so, you know, when, when ISPs go to consider filing grants, we can give them very specific data about where all these places are. Um, there, for, as I said, there were some upgrades, there's something called RDOF that was given out in 2020, that is, that, it's not really a grant, it's a federal subsidy that, that gets people to build better broadband. Uh, next link, uh, one, the biggest part of that for seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine locations, you can see Resound Networks won for twenty-five, Mid-South Fiber in the south of the county got the money for three-thirty-nine, and North Texas Fiber for two-thirteen. So these are places that have been awarded to build faster broadband, that's what that map looks like. Those areas are also shown in orange in the other, and some of this has already been built, so some of this has already been turned into fiber. Uh, the parts that are not, uh, next link is talking about doing very fast wireless. I don't, we haven't, I don't know, I don't think it's been upgraded yet. We don't see the faster speeds yet in the speed test, but they've promised to bring something of at least four-hundred megabits in those areas. So, so that's part of the orange on the other map is, is this big grant here. Um, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Tim a bit to talk about, about the network itself, and, uh, then I'll be back to talk about some other stuff.
Very good, thanks Doug. Take a drink of water, that was, that was a lot to cover there. Um, but I would say also, in addition to a lot of the data analysis, uh, in the creation of those maps, is also the culminations of a lot of interviews with, uh, the, the local ISPs, internet service providers, who we could actually talk one-on-one, and there was actually direct interviews, some ranging thirty minutes, some ranging an hour, uh, depending on, uh, the breadth and depth of the conversations. So we, we did interview majority of your providers, uh, and all had wonderful things to say about the county. So note that of your leadership, uh, good marks there, uh, but really, in understanding and, and talking with the ISPs in the interviews, we were able to understand their expansion, their concerns and roadblocks, as well as what, where they're headed into the future. And so that's culminated in those maps, it's already kind of baked in of where they're headed and where they currently have expla, expansion plans going. So, but a point I wanted to make was kudos to your county leadership, uh, all the ISPs had really good things to say. So with that, uh, moving into the design, so now we know kind of where the grant-eligible areas, that area in blue is. We come at it from the engineering side of things and look at a number of different key considerations on the design. Uh, we look at a couple of different factors. What is, what, what could be the largest investment? What is the longest estimated life of a network when it's designed? And it also has to look forward, it can not only just deal with what the needs are today, but what the needs are in the future. Uh, and that has a couple implications. Uh, we've seen the massive shift for, to work at home. If you have strong broadband, you can work from home and, and serve your functions if your business would allow for you to do so. In addition, content creation has become a, a massive need of data, uh, primarily with the download, but it's more so with the upload, the ability to get it to the internet when you're done doing what you're doing. And then, as we've seen in the past, uh, few years, the, the speed definitions used to define what is quality broadband, when, has gone from two thousand and nineteen, from ten-one, ten megabits down, one megabit up, to today, where NTIA and the USDA have now measured it at a hundred by twenty, which is what we're reviewing in your county here. Next slide, Doug. So the tech, the, the RFP asked us to look at a multitude of different technologies and, and variations of ways we could actually deploy the network. Uh, when we looked at your county and did your, did your field review, you certainly have some complexities here, as we look at terrain, topology, uh, and the density of, of trees, if you will. Uh, and looking at a comprehensive fixed wireless solution is probably very challenging to look at, although you have fixed wireless carriers deploying, uh, but they're mainly localized in, in specific areas where it makes sense, uh, in your county. We did also consider the fiber technologies, and that considered the, what's called in engineering speak, my apologies, is the passive optical network design, uh, could be the best fit. Uh, but it's also a network that's designed for the future, uh, with the ability to do ten gigabits symmetrical needs and beyond. And for this particular design, we looked at all of your eligible locations, including your RDOF areas, that subsidies area. So if by chance, one of those providers did not make good on their promise to the FCC, that is, the network's already designed, so we could go and bring that area in if we needed to in the future, if that were to occur. But then again, that is just a fail-safe measure that we do on our part, on your behalf, that you have it there at your fingertips if a provider or two does not make good down the road. So with that in mind, seventy-six-hundred passings were designed in this network, with just shy of six-hundred-and-forty-three fiber miles. So this next slide is actually a pictorial representation of what a fiber-to-the-home network looks like. Uh, there's a lot going on here. These are kind of what's called the network diagrams that grants ask for, so your state will, state of Texas will ask for this, USDA will ask for this, which is a network diagram. What is the basic representation on how that network works in your county? And so this is just a graphical representation of the fiber, the little lines are the fiber connections, if you will. So key components of, um, this particular network is, you know, looking at a, a buried and also aerial network of putting the fiber on the poles, looking at active versus passive. This is a little bit more of techno speak, my apologies, we looked at the passive model, but we also designed for capacity. As I mentioned earlier, ten gigabits symmetrical, uh, the upper limits actually can change down the road. Once the fiber network is in place, the speed cap, capabilities can increase over the network when you increase the technology and the equipment, uh, at the data centers or at the ISPs headquarters, if you will. So the network is built for the future, and speeds can go up in the future with better and stronger and more up-to-date equipment. Certainly had a data center included, and then we also put in some extra fiber for future growth, and understanding and interviews with county leadership, just kind of understanding where the areas of growth in the county are, making sure that there's extra fiber put in there, uh, to make good on that whenever that comes online. Next slide, Doug. So here's, uh, more maps, my apologies, but this is, this is actually taking that blue eligible area and breaking your county up into four quadrants. So with that, we had the north quadrant, north central, west, and south. And this is merely just for technology, this is not by demographics, this is not by population, this is about the design of the network, and what makes sense to have the technology where, to get all the homes and businesses connected. So we had four of those. And the next four slides were actually just representing the design itself, there's a lot of activity going on here, but I just wanted to have you see the different sectors, and Doug, if you want to just kind of scroll through gently. Uh, this is the design and all the fiber that's needed to get to each of the homes and businesses in each of your sectors. So the interesting part about this is, because you have made this investment as a county, this is actually accessible with your permission, uh, to your providers. If they want to look at a particular area, we can grab this data for a provider and then hand that, that design to them and those numbers that would really help them for a grant. Uh, so it's really kind of at the fingertips. Again, most of the ISPs will research our work and review our work and make it consistent with their design standards, but for the most part, we, we use industry standards when we do our design, so it's relatively, uh, turnkey when the providers come for this access to the data. Next slide.
All right, this is back to me, so. So we looked at the cost of the network, uh, and so this is a hundred percent buried network, uh, and so, and, and buried meaning it, the hu, the fiber's a hundred percent underground, and so, uh, and there's two different, um, costs that you have to consider. One is called market wages, which is what, you could just go out and hire somebody to build it for today. Grants require prevailing wages, they, they require paying a, a specific level of wages to the technicians who build the network, and so it costs a little more. The federal grants particularly require that, the state grants do not, so somebody building under the state grant would, would need about sixty-nine million dollars, or ten thou, over ten thousand, almost eleven thousand dollars per home, uh, to build it buried. Uh, if they, if they go for the federal grant, that, that increases almost to twelve thousand dollars a passing. Uh, that's a very high number, we, it was higher than we thought it would, it's going to be, and, and it turns out that there's, there's at least fifteen to twenty percent of rock all around the county, that when somebody goes to bury a network, they end up hitting the rock. We talked to all your ISPs multiple times, and, uh, and they, and they just said, yeah, that's a problem. So, so everywhere, every, everywhere you look, uh, it's, it's expensive. So the places where there's not rock is cheaper, but the rock, the rock is eight or ten times more expensive per foot to build than anyplace else, so. We also then looked at an aerial network, and actually, that was even more expensive. Uh, and it turns out that the poles in the county are old, that are kind of short, they're kind of already full of other wires, and so that means there's a whole lot of work that has to be done. The industry word for that is make-ready, and so it turns out that both of your options are expensive. Uh, the ISPs are obviously very distraught about this themselves, it costs more to build in your fiber, in your county than, than a whole lot of places around you. Uh, in, in fact, to put this in perspective, uh, you know, we've looked at studies in three or four other states very recently, where the numbers are more like eight thousand dollars a passing, so that, the extra cost in the county makes it a problem. And what that means is, the bottom line is, absolutely, the ISPs are going to need grant money to build here. So whether they do it aerial or buried, uh, they're going to need a lot of grant money. The good news is, in Texas, there's a lot of grant money available. So, so that, you know, there, obviously, no one's going to build this in the rural areas out of their own pocket without getting some help from, from both either the federal or the state government. Um, again, there's forty-two billion dollars coming from the feds, we expect, you know, two to three billion, uh, for Texas. In fact, while we're on the phone today, that number might be announced, and so it's, it's being announced today how much Texas gets out of that pile of money. Uh, there's also the one-and-a-half billion I mentioned from the state, uh, assuming that the voters think it's a good idea to build fiber. Texas still has more money also from past rounds of grants that they're still giving out, so there's actually a, a little more available. Uh, there's also a bunch of funding available for digital, digital literacy, which is teaching people how to use computers, and there's also actually a, quite a bit of grant money that can be used to get computers into more homes, and so that's something else that is worth looking at. Um, strategic questions, uh, you know, what you see here, I mean, to sum up sort of the study, you have a lot, you know, sixty-three-hundred homes and businesses that, that don't have good broadband, the cost to build's pretty high, uh, and so the question is, is the county willing to help fund a solution? Uh, it's not, it's not, certainly not necessary that you do so. About half of the counties we've worked for have decided to put some of their ARPA money in to help match the other grants, about half don't. I mean, it's just, it's something for you all to talk about. Uh, if you decided to do that, the way that normally looks is, is you would interview ISPs, probably write an RFI, have them make proposals to you, and if you found any worthwhile projects, uh, you might give them some grant funding that would go along with them winning other larger grants. Um, you know, you also then have to decide, what's the county's best role? Certainly, everyone's going to ask you to support their grants. You're going to want to be a little careful there in that, you don't want to just support every grant, because you, you, you want to pick the folks you most support, because if you get two or three people asking to build the same part of the county, uh, you know, the grant office is going to look back to you to see which one of those you like the best, and so you have to be a little careful there. Uh, that's one of the follow-ups of this study, that we can help you figure out how to do that. And more, mostly, you just map it, you interview them and, and sort of pick them. The good news is, you have a lot of really high-quality local fiber overbuilders, you're going to, you have some really good candidates in the county to do this. And we also learned, again, about the cellular coverage, um, you know, uh, there is nine, supposedly nine billion dollars coming from the FCC to build new cell towers, and so, you know, and I'll talk a little bit more on the next slides about what you might be able to do about that. And speaking of the cell towers, here's the coverage, that's the north half of the county on the left, the south half of the county on the right. We didn't put the center of the county on, because obviously, in the cities, you have, they're completely covered with cell towers, and so. But when you get to the rural areas, you can see, the yellow areas have very poor cell coverage, and so it, it's surprising, uh, for a county of, of your, of your population and of your growth rate, that the cell companies have not done a better job of getting the cell towers out there. So, so obviously, you know, there's, in both, both north and south, there's a whole lot of areas, and we can see why people are complaining about the cell coverage. Uh, this actually surprised us, especially the south one, like, that's really, really surprising. Uh, and the reason we bring that up is, I mentioned, there's that nine-billion-dollar fund, um, there is something you can do to help, to help with that. The FCC is going to give that money out to the places that need the cell coverage the most, and the way to get that done is to get a whole lot of folks in your county to take the FCC speed test. This is not a regular web speed test, you actually have to use the FCC app on your cellphone, and so, uh, and so the report's going to describe that in great detail. A lot of counties are actually, you know, actually even sending summer interns around to go get a cell test taken in all these yellow areas, because you want to get in the FCC database. Nine billion sounds like a lot from the FCC, but there's been estimated that that might only be, you know, that only might be twenty or even fifteen percent of the money needed to solve this problem everywhere, there's a lot of rural cell towers needed. Um, your next step is to decide, you know, for anything you're going to do, who's going to do it, uh, pretty obviously. We strongly recommend that you reach out to ISPs and start these conversations, uh, if you're, especially if you're considering giving ARPA grants, you want to start that process. If nothing else, you want to start bringing them in, and, because one of the best roles the county can, can undertake is to make sure that somebody is going to come to all those blue areas on the map. And so if, if all your ISPs want to go to the east, it's like, hey, which one of you guys is going to go to the west? And so you have to have those conversations. What we have found in your county is the ISPs already know each other fairly well, and they do communicate well, and so I think the county, uh, as a middleman, can really help to make sure that every place gets a grant request. I mean, that's going to be your ultimate goal, is to make sure that somebody goes after it. Even though that's a lot of grant money coming, if you don't get a solution in this round of grants, places that don't get it may not get it for a long, long time, so. So getting, getting every, somebody to decide to build the each inch of those blue areas is the thing. Uh, you'll have to decide how to involve the public in the process, we'll be giving you here fairly soon that long report we talked about. Uh, we, we do ask that you review your local fiber policies, uh, which is permitting and inspe, inspection and all those kind of things that have to do with construction. Uh, we didn't hear any negative things from the ISPs, as Tim said, but it's still worth reviewing those before people go and try to build a whole lot of fiber and find out that, that some of your processes slow them down. And again, the cellular speed test, your, your cellular issue is pretty major, and, and, and we, you know, we recommend that you look into finding ways to, to get, let the FCC know that you have bad cellular coverage. Uh, so that's really our presentation. Uh, the, the report will be in, obviously, much, much more detail. Uh, we'll be glad to answer any of your questions, there's our, there's our email addresses, our phone numbers, feel free to reach out to us at any time, uh, and, uh, and so with that, I think we'll open it up to any questions you have.
Everything you need to know about broadband.
That's a lot of information.
Yes, it is.
Well, and, and it's, honestly, it's information- Well, and it's honestly, it's information we didn't expect to find. We didn't expect to find so many people without broadband, so.
Yeah, I know, we've been looking at the maps for a long time. And, and there's lots of folks that live in those areas that, and I'm one of them, that would say, you know, it's, it's, we don't have the kind of speeds that they're talking to 20 and 100 that, you know, this.
No.
So it doesn't really surprise me. The price course is a, 75 million is a huge number. I mean, my hope, this, I think that's what we wanted to do with this study was take a look at, because we recognize that there's grant money coming. And it looks like it's coming fairly quickly with the state and feds. And so we wanted to try to be in a position that, that we could try to help the providers out there go after some of that grant money. Hopefully enough of it to help that speeds in, in those areas as much as possible. I'm not surprised at the cell complaints. I mean, I complain all the time and I've switched providers and, and it got worse and I may have to switch back. So I, to the one that I thought was bad before I switched to another one. So that doesn't surprise me either. So I'm, I.
Hopefully you got all, hopefully you got all the benefits.
Well, I did, but I had to give up some when I switched back. But anyway, so those are our things that I want to take a look at is if there's ways for us, the county, to help bring those grants here to put towers in. So I, I'm still not exactly sure where we need to go. Our, our ARPA funds are, we've made commitments on things, but I don't know that there's, there's not that kind of money in ARPA funds left that would, that would generate anywhere close to the kind of money that we're talking about to, to cover that area out there. And we, we recognize with ARPA funds, those are, we need to move forward and we have been. And we've, we've kind of decided the directions we're going with those planned things. And so it'd be difficult to try to switch much money into broadband from ARPA funds. My hope had been that if there's lots of money coming, and it looks like there is, that, that if we can get ready and, and try to prepare and, and that's what I hope with the study, that we could reach out and hopefully bring in some more of the fed money or state money.
Absolutely. And that's really what it's, what it is. You've done a significant yeoman's effort to get this ready for the grant processes with the state of Texas and the federal funds. We're eight minutes away from finding out, you know, what Texas is going to receive from the White House. So certainly that is coming. It's going to take the state a while to get that stood up, but there's currently monies in play right now. And so having and being organized with your information, with the report, with your ISPs who are going to go pursue the state grants. Because typically the state has a certain level of data they have at their fingertips of what's eligible and ineligible. A study like this will help combat a lot of that data to say it actually is eligible and let us show you why. So that grant now becomes in play at the state because they've given more evidence and information. And then you couple that with county support and that can be logistical support. That could be a letter of support. And certainly a lot of, you know, state programs do provide some extra points if it's got local dollars in the mix, cities or county. But again, that's a decision on priorities and what you guys have in front of you later today. But certainly what you're doing right now for your ISPs for future grant work is this is a significant leap forward, so.
I, I agree. And I think convincing the state and feds that their maps are incorrect is, is going to be critical to trying to draw down money, so.
I have a question on the passings. You've identified 6328 is unserved. Are those actual addresses?
Yes.
Those are not individuals, those are physical addresses.
Physical addresses of what we're able to get from GIS records and also visualizing as we're designing a network, so.
Yeah, that's both GIS and 911 data. It's residences and businesses, so yes, in there.
And that'll be broken out in the report.
I know your, your data put together, your areas of where speeds were capable. And that's really great stuff. But what type of data do we have on speed variance? And the reason I'm asking that question is, is, you know, bandwidth was not a real big deal until COVID hit. And then everybody was supposed to go home, flip on the switch. But then all of a sudden, we'd overwhelmed that bandwidth and capacity. So can you give us any insights on how you, and I'm sure our ISPs can too. Can you give us any insights on how we make sure that when we have those types of changes to where we're adequately covered or where we're, you know, that, that was a big, big change. And I'm sure that there were people that went out and had to work in areas where they had that capacity. But then once that part of the network was being taxed, it didn't really work out that way.
Yeah. I'm going to take a stab at it and let Doug kind of grab me on the other side if I miss something. But a couple of different things. In our speed test work, we actually were able to access some, some much deeper detailed data from the OUGLA, which is one of the national, one of the, the leading national speed tests. And in each of the areas, I know, right? But it was able to get a speed test in, in all of your county and where there were tests taking, taken. And just remember that table was an average. So that there was different speeds at different levels in itself. And, and the technology is what the technology is. If it's DSL, cable or fiber, it's going to act a little bit differently when it's overwhelmed. Fiber certainly has a lot more capabilities to handle the load, if you will. And then the other thing I would say on the grant side of things, the grant language, and we saw this in CARES. We, we saw it in ARPA and we certainly see it now in the infrastructure bill, which is called BEAD. The language is a lot more strong about searching for the ideal of symmetrical speeds, latency, and also providers who apply for an area have to apply for 100% of that area. Not a portion, not a small percentage, all of that area, and they can serve it robustly and not simply in just taking cherry picks out of the project area. So Doug, what did I miss?
Well, another way to answer your question is it's all based on the technology. So for those grant areas, we want technologies for the grants that are fast enough. It's that simple. So, so we don't want to give any, we don't want to support any grants that are building technologies that are questionable. And so I, obviously fiber is ideal. $75 million is a lot of money. But, you know, if the state really has four to five billion in money, maybe there's, you know, your county, your share, you certainly ought to be eligible for 75 million out of a $4 billion pile of money, I would think. So, so I think the money might be there, let's hope, so.
Other, other question I had, and you kind of related to that, is scalability. What's coming next? I mean, this is all, it's newer and newer and newer. And I, I know that the people who are in the industry are going to be our best guides. But how do we make sure that we build a robust, is the word I guess, scalable network that gives us the capacity to have the ability to be able to add as we develop? Because what's happening in Texas right now is, is a lot of the municipal areas, they're not able to grow. And we're having development across the state of Texas now more and more rural. And that's going to continue because all the, all the data says Texas is going to continue to grow. And I was just curious about, you know, we don't want to be building a system or helping somebody build a system and then find out, hey, five years, 10 years later. I know that's long term in terms of how fast all this stuff changes. But, you know, then it's, okay, nuke this one and we got to do something different.
Yeah, and that's probably the, the primary reason why we looked at a fiber in the home design itself because it certainly has that longevity, that 30 to 50 year longevity of the network itself. And even, even your local fiber builders, overbuilders in your county that you have going on right now, they're investing in fiber networks because they know for the long term, it's the investment, the hard investment now, but it certainly will have the payback later as it, and you just have to keep up on the equipment and the back of the house things to increase abilities and capabilities. But the other thing that I know ISPs have also talked about too is having that redundant connection. If they have a primary connection, they want a secondary connection. Because if something were to happen in the system, they want to be able to switch over. And really the consumers and the businesses don't miss a beat. Maybe milliseconds, milliseconds of what, it's a glitch. But they want that redundant connection and all the providers are seeking that as well.
Well, and there's, and there's another answer for you as well. You're a big county, it's a pretty large place. And, and we have all these different fiber providers. In the long run, you also want, if everyone built fiber in all those blue areas, you would also want them to connect each other. Because that creates what's called a middle mile network so that they can, they can back up each other. And so I think in a county of your size, that's the real robust network is that if somebody cuts a fiber everywhere, anywhere, we don't want a whole town to go down for a week. So you kind of want that backup so that doesn't happen. So, so that'll be part of, you know, the goals of talking to ISPs is to make sure that they all connect each other and make something that's good for the whole county, so.
Would it, would it be logical for us to consider including that as part of our groundwork for being involved with ISPs on grants? Is, is that we, that we require that it's a middle, a middle mile network?
Yes, sir. I think that's very reasonable.
Okay. That's great. Then the other thing is, is I don't think we've ever really talked about it, about we don't want, we don't want to become an internet service provider as a county. We want to partner with entities in the county. And I guess I don't understand, have quite the understanding that I need about how this all works. But, you know, we don't want to be in the business of maintaining. We want to, we want to get, we don't want to be in the business of picking winners and losers. So having the type of, the type of uniformity in the ways we participate and setting that up from the beginning to where we're not running afoul of some of those issues. I really, really appreciate your further guidance on that. Maybe that's all addressed in the larger, larger report. And one last.
Go ahead.
Well, I could tell you that I've only ever met one county you even thought about being an ISP. Nobody wants to do that, so, yes, sir.
Well, I think, I think we had some local governments look into that and decide, no, that's not the way to go. So, but I, I'm, I, I just can't imagine that we would want to go that route.
And commissioners, with your comment about winners and losers, I would say this. If you were to put resources out to the market, you're essentially taking in proposals, assessing those proposals and supporting those proposals. So you're kind of picking a winner because it met all of your criteria for a successful application.
Right.
And that would be the other thing. If there's not resources on the table and there's letters of support requested, this study gives you the ability to say, this is our standard and this is the data that it's rooted in. And this is what we would like to see from our providers if we were to support, even with just the letter. Even what we're going to support, this is the, the three things, five things, six things we want to see as a part of an application for us to give you a letter from the county. Because we want it to mean something when the state sees it for the state applications or even the federal application. It's very powerful when communities and counties and regions put their letters in, but you want it to mean something. And it's not just that boilerplate language they gave you. It's, hey, fill this out and get it back to me within three days. You really want it to mean something when you submit it.
I think, I think there's some work that we need to do in figuring out, okay, so in partnering on grants and partnering on spending any funds or anything, everybody's going to have, you're going to have to have a, a uniform playing field. Okay. And then one last thing I wanted to ask about was, was there any, I, I know we've had conversations with the council of governments and they have a fiber optic network. And I've heard all kinds of yays or nays about their network and all that. What, do, do, do we have any benefits? Or in y'all's, y'all's study, does it make sense for us to consider, partner, work with what, what our council of governments are doing relative to this? Because it also has an impact on our regional status, I think, in the way things are going to continue to develop and grow because it's all, it's all seven hour counties.
Yeah, the, the issue there is the funding that paid for those networks, it's not particularly easy to turn around and use it for commercial purposes. I mean, you're using it for, for government purposes, schools, universities, but it's not that particularly easy to turn around and let ISPs use it. So that would be, if you can do that, that would be a larger middle mile network. So that's the conversation to have. Because the answer is that's, that's a bigger piece of the middle mile network. That's a regional middle mile network. I mean, it's just as important that if a network goes down, that the county next door can support you just like it is locally. So, so that, that's the, that's the hurdle you have to overcome is the ability to let the ISPs lease a couple fibers on that network or whatever. Right now, on government networks, that's usually very difficult to do, so.
And then if, you know, for this particular study, we looked at the, the last mile connectivity, which are homes and businesses. And if there's typically a middle mile network deficiency in the county, many times the last mile providers would, would take on that piece to close that. Because that allows for a bit, a bigger or broader business portfolio for them to not only connect homes and businesses, but then to have that middle mile piece that they can contribute to the overall regional network.
Well, and, and then looking at that network, by the way, we looked at where the existing fibers are and you're not going to be surprised that there was not a lot of fiber going through some of the blue areas, so.
Yeah. Thanks.
All right. Great job. We will look forward to, I'm sure, the next step. And I'm sure y'all will be involved in trying to determine how we can go after some of this money that I saw that, that they may release some of that this morning too. So we'll look, take a look at that and see how y'all may help us write a proposal so that we can move forward to try to seek grants.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
I would just hope that seems to me, short of $75 million coming in our lap, that it's a conversation of perhaps sometimes putting a few things in our arsenal to, to complete the task. So right now, just looking at your data, the fixed wireless broadband versus passive optical network fiber technology recommendation, I would hope that if we, if we, if we can't find a way for 75 million, I just don't hold out a lot of hope for that, that we would still be able to utilize you guys to best address maybe a second best option in your opinion of, of utilizing several of the different technologies to address those issues. What you, the information you showed is underserved or not served, I think is very important and probably surprising to a lot of people. It's definitely a problem here in Brazos County, but with additional, you know, working with the FCC, like you mentioned about the bad cellular coverage. And maybe a, a mixed bag of tricks in these technologies to address what we need to do shy of $75 million gift. Not a gift, it's taxpayer money either way, but $75 million coming our way. I'd be surprised about that. So hopefully we can utilize your, your expertise too to work on multiple options to solve this issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess.
And let me just say.
Go ahead.
Let me just say that the underserved part of it, particularly in my precinct, I am not surprised because of what I have seen, what I've been seeing pre-COVID. And then of course, absolutely COVID, just like you all have said, COVID really brought it to the forefront. And I continue to hear the satisfaction with access around the county and in the outer, in the blue areas. Now, I live in a, I live in an area, not in the blue area. And so I've had two fiber optic company, companies come through my neighborhood. You know, one tearing up the yard and doing other stuff to, to lay their fiber. And certainly now they're making the full court press to sell me on that. But certainly I, I see, I hear complaints all the time. I am confronted out, when I'm out and about with people who, once they realize who I am and they live in those blue areas, they're very concerned. And so I hope that, again, with, with my esteemed colleagues are saying that we find a way, maybe with your advice on helping us figure out how to do that because it's a lot of information. But at the end of the day, our constituents, they just want service.
That's right.
And so the issue becomes what can we do with the resources we may have access to, to try as best we can to serve our community? Because that's all they care about. They want to get phone service, they want to get, they want to be able to stream. They want to get phone service, they want to get, they want to be able to stream, and they want their children to be able to have access to whatever they need from an educational perspective.
Absolutely. It's figuring out the best way of taking big bites out of the elephant. Yes, 75 million is a lot.
Sure.
But it is because of that public-private partnerships you're seeking for and that support of future requests, you know, a $15 million application takes a pretty good bite out of that 75 million. And you may have two or three providers that were willing to take that stab. And so you, you can really drive down that 75 with a couple of support areas of, some of your providers are already currently expanding in your county.
Right, right.
Tim and Doug, thank you very much for such a very comprehensive report. Thank you for all your time and effort.
Yeah, appreciate your time today, and I also want to mention, my wife is an Aggie, so she's, she was excited, she was excited about your report, so.
Thank you.
Tell her thanks and giggle.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I hear that every Saturday at football season.
Hopefully more this season.
And I guess my question is, is kind of while we've got y'all here, is, okay, so what are the next steps? Where do we go from here? Now we have this data and information that we want.
I think that that might depend on how these grant awards come out. Not grant, well, the, the money from the feds for Texas and the money from Texas, which I think.
To the county.
Which needs to be voted on. But for speed, I would, that's why I was hoping that we could maybe look at multiple options and not just the one option, because of the speed of potentially addressing those people that are underserved or without. The passive optical network fiber technology might take some time. So if we're not, if we're not looking at a favorable $75 million coming our way or even taking it apart, like you said, with ISPs, I'd sure be interested in addressing for speed of service, the fixed wireless broadband solutions as well as other solutions.
Well, and I think that convincing the state that the map that they actually go by currently is incorrect.
Yes.
Is going to be a key to even access to some of those grants, I think. I mean, you know, that's, that'd be my takeaway, so I think that's where we'd need to be.
And utilizing Chancellor Sharp and his contacts too. I mean, he, you know, this isn't just another university at this point. We have, we have things here and things coming here with regard to treating a pandemic on a global inoculation solution in, out of Brazos County. I mean, with, with regard to technology, health, and wellness, both human sciences, animal sciences, we have vaccine manufacturing happening here, we have Army Futures Command happening here. So I think that we could utilize some of those system relationships, Texas A&amp;M system relationships, to help hammer that into the state to make them understand with this data how underserved and non-served parts of the county are. And that, that has to do with that network, Texas A&amp;M system having good technology, good communications, but also there are people that they're recruiting to come here and live here that they'd be able to communicate and be reached quickly in an event of an emergency or that their expertise were called upon. So hopefully, the A&amp;M system can partner with us in helping make that, these findings known to the state with the underserved and unserved portions, I think are going to be news to the state, so.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just looking for what next and how do we get proactive? Because, you know.
Well, I'm calling Chancellor.
On the grant, on the grant.
Today.
My, we can't win if we don't enter. And grants are, you got to be able to enter, and we need to have some things established before we enter. Or partner, which I'm sure we will be, with private entities in order to do this. And we need to have our next steps outlined. We need to be ready to, ready to enter, because the money's going somewhere. Let's just make sure that we get what we need here.
Our report's going to have some detailed next steps, way more than this slide, Doug. So we definitely, you definitely need to get proactive, and we were going, we'll give you a list of ways to do that.
Excellent.
Yeah, the strategic questions page in your presentation is the one that, you know, that's where we get started and how we, how we take care of those three bullet points makes a big, makes a big difference.
Absolutely.
Don't you think some of the organizations that will want to partner with us to receive, it's sort of like you guys already know, there's, there's grant infrastructure money that's coming to Texas, that Texas will then dispense to the counties. So don't you think probably some of those organizations that want to help receive some of that grant money knows what you know? So they're already sort of positioning themselves to approach us? So then we, back to your picking winners and losers.
Yep.
They will come forth with their best proposal for us to look at organizations that we may be able to partner with?
Yeah, absolutely.
Let me answer one of the things you just said. The money's going to go directly from the state to the ISPs, so they will not be giving it to the county as the intermediary.
Okay.
So what we want to do is to make sure that your ISPs ask for all the money.
Right, right. And that's what, that's what I meant. So the ISPs are, so they know what you know, they're already looking at, you know, if they want to be in Brazos County, they will know what to do in terms, they'll be thinking about what they need to do to put, put themselves up in the ranking for consideration to work with us.
Absolutely.
And some of them did not, are not going to know everything in this report, they're probably going to be surprised by some of these blue areas too, so.
Okay.
So we're, the, the whole point of this is to get them up to speed.
Got you.
And it's all data they need to put into their grants to actually make the case. Doug has worked with state broadband offices all over the country, and me being a former broadband director of a state office, we always had language in there that says, give us evidence and data to tell us our maps are wrong. And if you can tell us that we're wrong and it's compelling, we will certainly consider it, so.
Okay. So the wheels are turning.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I mean, I do have one last question I forgot. It's the, okay, Arda.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sure I don't understand this to the detail I need to, but do these people have exclusive rights of service that we cannot, that we're limited by as far as whoever we're working with in these areas? Because they've, you know, next, you got NextLink, Resound Networks, and Mid-South Fiber, North Texas Fiber. In those areas, where they've addressed that? Are we?
And the two areas where the fiber guys are, they have an exclusive because they're providing fiber. I mean, they're giving you the solution you're looking for, right? The wireless carriers, if they don't use licensed spectrum, you could get grant money to overbuild them, so. So that, that, those are, that's, those are more of a gray area, so.
Yeah.
The fiber providers are exactly what you're looking for. You're looking for ISPs to build fiber, that's two.
They're doing it and doing it, they're doing it and doing it the way we want it done.
Yes, yes, sir.
But in the areas where it's not being done the way we want it done, we need to have opportunities for other people to get in there and get it done.
And the wireless providers, all the providers actually have a commitment with the FCC. Whenever they accepted that subsidy, they also accepted the commitment and a timeframe to meet certain benchmarks, to do their builds out, build outs for their respective states. So they have a commitment with the state of Texas to make it.
From, from what I've read and learned about that, those were pretty long fuses on those firecrackers.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
They have a pretty big runway, so you're not wrong.
Yeah.
I mean, you may not see anything on that for three or four years. That's a problem, so, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll be able to tiptoe around the issues.
You're asking, you're asking the right questions.
That's right.
Thank you. All right. Well, we're going to adjourn this and take a break and give the opportunity for Cheryl to get set up for the next hearing.
We'll try.
It's 10:02, or by that clock, I'm not sure whether that was correct or not. 10 o'clock. But we'll come back and.
You're spot on, 10 o'clock with, with the handicap.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.